First meeting.
Thank you for this opportunity, sir. Thank you for this great council. Thank you to our mayor and the county. Thank you for the state to serve our state. I've got to agree, only the United States. God bless Biloxi, God bless America. Thank you, brother.
Amen, amen.
And if Shane Dimitri would lead his super.
I want to be the leading leader of the state of America. To do a better job of establishing states, one nation, one good God, and visible, the British Union's justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
It's a move.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Second by Mr. Can't, can't write that fast. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor? Six oh for the clerk, thank you. Brings us to the mayor's report, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome to this first meeting of 2022. We're looking for another good year after a couple of not so goods. But again, we do look forward to this year. Can you hear me, George?
We got it.
And the only thing I have in mind, unless Mike has something to do, I'm going to ask you to spread the expenses of Biloxi travel credit card to the minutes. And that concludes my report.
And nothing from Mr. Leonard? All right. Could cruise to a record tonight. All right, there are no departmental reports, I don't believe. That brings us to the council report, Mr. Lawrence.
Well, everybody had a great weekend, great New Year's weekend. Everything went well. City was packed, every place you went was jam-packed. So I think it was good. Covid's up a little bit, but you know, this new Covid is very contagious, but it's not a biggie. It only lasts a few days. It's not like the Delta, the Omicron, totally different. Spreads quicker, but it just don't really go any steady mutation diet. So anyway, that's good. Let's have a great year, 22. It's going to be something unusual. Big special thing for the city of Biloxi. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Gaines?
Yes, I just wanted to say Happy New Year to everybody and let's please be safe and have a great, wonderful year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Ms. Newman? Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Glavine?
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Barrett?
Happy New Year.
And likewise for me, Happy New Year to everybody. That's the fastest ever from the councilman. Thank you. That brings us to the public agenda at this time. Citizens comments will allot up to 45 minutes total for citizens' comments. Any speakers will be permitted up to three minutes to speak. When you come up to the table, the microphone, I believe, is on. If not, we'll be sure it's on for you. But take a moment to sign in your name and address, then state your name clearly for the council clerk so she can record it accurately in the minutes. When your time is up, the clerk will hit a bell and I'll remind you that your time is up and we'll move to the next speaker. That being said, is anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to speak? Anybody on my right, your left? I see a hand. I see a couple of hands, okay. I don't know everybody, but gentleman in the front, striped shirt? All right, Ms. Tripp? Never wanted to miss an opportunity, I might add.
Can you hear me?
Pull it a little closer.
Pull it a little closer. Is my time started? Okay. Good evening. My name is Martha Hunt Tripp. I live at 132 Jefferson Davis Avenue, and I've lived in the neighborhood for 71 years. I went to West End Elementary School, and it's Lopez now, after Katrina organized walks in our neighborhood. Some of you may recognize me as I was here in November, the 4th, 2020, opposing a short-term rental on Acacia. And I'm here today regarding an opposition authorizing a short-term rental to 1501 Avalon Street. The people also, some people here today, would you please stand? They are neighbors in that area that are against this also. We have gathered together, wanted you to know how many people are opposing this. It has been already approved by your planning commission, but we knew we had one more chance here, so we're here. I know that the Avalon Street used to be an Avalon Hotel. There was a manager there 24 hours. If we have short-term rental on that area, there's only, a manager will be there, but he won't be there 24 hours. I oppose vacation rentals because it happened in my neighborhood, and we had lots of cars, we had lots of things going on up and down our street. Mr. Lawrence shut it down. It was not an approved one. Thank goodness for that. We appreciate that. There were also, you've already approved the one in front of Avalon Street. Lots of cars there, but not cars. One day, we had horse there grazing on the side. Our neighborhood has become a hotspot for vacation rentals. We have a nice house. We want to keep it that way, and all the people that are here feel the same way. We want that to stay as a neighborhood. You're the leaders, you're the protectors of our neighborhoods. You have got to stand up for this for us. We are expecting you to protect our neighborhoods. Being a lifelong citizen and a homeowner, please give this request of short-term rental some serious thought. I am happy people are buying our property. I am happy they want to live here, but I want them to make this their home, not a short-term rental, that you just have somebody there for a weekend. And that's my thoughts on this. And I appreciate all the people that showed up to show you that they are in opposition of this also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tripp.
I did it in 45 minutes.
Outstanding. This, yes ma'am. Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
I'm guessing. Okay, thank you.
Did you say I have to say my name?
Yes, ma'am, please.
I'm Teresa Thompson. I own the property at 1506 Avalon Street. I'm here to oppose granting the conditional use requests for short-term rental for the property at 1501 Avalon Street. Granting this request has the potential to place undue hardships on long-term residents and will set a precedent that could allow a long-established residential neighborhood to become overrun with short-term rentals. According to the planning commission fact sheet, there are nine standard listings from A to I for conditional use properties. The sheet clearly says a conditional use should only be approved upon finding that all conditional use standards are met. There are at least three areas where we do not see the property at 1501 Avalon meeting these standards. Standard C, the conditional use is compatible with the character of the surrounding lands. Standard E, the conditional use is configured to minimize adverse visual impacts on adjacent lands. Standard G, the conditional use maintains safe road conditions around the site. Standard C is a major concern, as it has longstanding consequences if a decision is made to allow this conditional use request. 1501 Avalon does not connect to Beach Boulevard. Its entry ties directly into the surrounding neighborhood, which is zoned residential all the way to Irish Hill. Both executive planner Ed Chamber and planning commission member Michael Todaro expressed concern that this is a decision which impacts the future of the whole neighborhood and should be viewed in that light. This is not a decision isolated to a single property. It sets the stage for other properties connected to Avalon or within the surrounding West End neighborhood to become short-term rentals, changing the dynamic of a longstanding historic 100-year-old Biloxi residential neighborhood marked by historic homes, families, and retirees who have lived here for decades. Short-term rentals are not active members of the neighborhood. They do not look out for the well-being of their fellow neighbors, nor are they looking to raise a family and contribute to the neighborhood as a whole. I am a lifelong resident of this neighborhood. I own 1506 Avalon Street, a designated Biloxi landmark. My children grew up in this house, which makes this my home, not just a house. My home survived Hurricane Camille and was nearly destroyed in Hurricane Katrina. We invested in rebuilding after the storm in lieu of abandoning the neighborhood because we felt it was a safe, family-oriented place. Now you are threatening to destroy the very thing we have worked so hard to keep together. We have not invested in and been a part of this neighborhood only to have its character and reputation destroyed by short-term rentals. Please help us preserve our 100-year-old neighborhood by voting against this conditional use request. Thank you for your time, and please help save our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Anybody else on my right, your left, wish to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Sid Trahan. I live at 127 St. George Avenue, corner of St. George and Avalon. So I'm directly across Avalon from the property in question. I'd like to start off the season by saying I support growth for tourism industry and city Biloxi, and I'm not opposed to short-term rentals, if located in the proper area. This neighborhood is not the proper area. The development that you just approved south of Highway 90 is a perfect example of the right location for short-term rentals. I've lived in this neighborhood for 30 years. My wife has lived in this neighborhood for her entire life. I'm here to represent a significant group of neighbors that you have already seen, as well as myself, in opposition to the request for conditional use of 1501 Avalon Street. The authorization of this property for short-term rental will generate devastating results for this old Biloxi neighborhood. Ms. Teresa and I will be directly affected by this request because we live in close proximity to the subject property. I live across the street, she lives at the end of the Avalon dead-end street. We currently have limited road access to our property due to Avalon Street only being 20-foot wide, and it's a dead end. By allowing this request, the number of vehicles that will be visiting 1501 Avalon on a regular basis, which already has limited parking, will overflow onto Avalon, reducing if not blocking access to our property, not just for us, but our garbage collection and also fire and safety. You cannot get down to Avalon with a car parked on it. It's not wide enough to garbage truck can't make it. And if he drives by on a Friday morning to pick up garbage and there's a car there, he will not stop and ask the car to move. He'll just keep going, and we'll have to wait another week for our garbage to be picked up, provided there's not a car parked there the next week. So it's a continuing situation, not if, but when it will happen. There are currently three lots, other lots, that back up to Avalon that could follow the same scenario. If this occurs, it'll create a traffic nightmare, and the current infrastructure on that Avalon Street will not support it. They had to bury a water line in there after Katrina to give Ms. Teresa water because there was no water service down that road. It's a dead-end alley. But that's just the beginning of the problems. By allowing this request, you will be granting the first residential property in the neighborhood that does not border Highway 90 permission for short-term rental. This will create the opportunity for anyone to request permission for short-term rental, and since the precedent will have been set, your ability to oppose future requests will be compromised. I thank you for the opportunity to address you, and I hope you are as dedicated as we are in saving the structure of one of Biloxi's oldest neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Trahan. Anybody else on my right, your left, wish to speak? Mr. Foster?
My name is James Barney Foster. I've been doing vacation rentals for eight years. The house we started in was down by the Coliseum. The neighborhood was going to crap. I raised my kids in that neighborhood. I grew up in that neighborhood, and I don't know if y'all remember, the ladies from Edgewater Park opposed it, just like all this. None of it came true. The vacation rentals, they act like these tourists are going to be bad people. I've been doing it eight years. I've never had one problem out of these people. They're great individuals, just like all of us. They're here on their vacation, and they're not a bunch of wild, unruly people. I've never had the police called. I had an email today for a vacation rental. Also operate the beach house right south of this house, and there's a definite market for this stuff. But I had an email this morning, it was about a bachelor's party, and they asked, because I put on my description about a quiet neighborhood, I put neighborhood watch on there to help stop that stuff. And they asked if the neighborhood watch, the quiet time, was strictly enforced. And I replied, yes, there's a strict neighborhood watch program, and it's strictly enforced. Never heard back from them. And that's how you eliminate a lot of this stuff. As far as the parking, the horse, it was at my beach house, it was when they had the rodeo at the Coliseum. The lady asked, I said, they stayed over a couple of days. And I said, I don't think nobody'd care if you brought the trailer there. And that's why they brought it there, because the Coliseum made them move it. But it's been great. Never had a problem at the beach house down there either, and I support it 110%. When I came here originally on the Briarfield Avenue neighborhood, everybody saw it operate on that street. They had seen that neighborhood go downhill, and when they saw the vacation rental, they, everybody on the whole street signed the petition to do the vacation rental. And the only ones that opposed it was people from Edgewater Park neighborhood. But y'all know what tourists are like. They're great people. These are, it's a new market. I saw a niche, and I went for it on the bigger houses, and it worked, on the beach house. Mr. McDonald's got a house directly behind mine. Horton built them. D.R. Horton built the homes. They're beautiful homes. And there's a, I mean, I looked around, I said, we got the Beau Rivage, we have the Hard Rock, we have Legends, all these nice hotels. We got to have some nice houses for these guests. And a lot of the customers, it's families, they come, some will come from like Dallas, Atlanta, Detroit, but they come from different areas.
Professor, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Anybody else on my right, your left? Yes, sir.
My name's Matt McDonald. I am the owner of 1501 Avalon Street. My wife and I purchased the property back in July. We had, I had used, gone to various cities and used VRBO myself with my, with my children and my friends. You've gone to Atlantic City, Gulf Shores, Alabama, Myrtle Beach. And then my wife and I started looking at various cities for a second home for us, for something that we would potentially use as a vacation rental, and then also where we'd plan to retire. We looked in Myrtle Beach, we looked in Gulf Shores, Alabama, and then we came over, stayed in Long Beach. We were actually over in Gulf Shores, went through a D.R. Horton new-built sub, and got on the website and saw 1501 Avalon. Met with the realtor the next day, put an offer on it. We, I talked to the realtor. He, he had talked about the short-term rentals. He had told me that the zoning for, in 1501 Avalon is proper zoning for short-term rental properties, which I had, from then, I had called the city, and I actually talked to the city, talked to, I don't exactly have notes of who I talked to, and they said that there was, the zoning was proper for that, but I had to, there's a process that I have to go through to, to get approval. They looked at the map, they said, they didn't, didn't see that being an issue, and they also said back further in the sub, there's, that's not even zoned properly, there's some multi-unit apartments there. And it's my understanding that the property where I'm at used to be a hotel and an apartment. I think with, with the city, what we're trying, I think you guys will attract upper-middle-class families that are coming to look at, look at cities where they're trying to stay. That's kind of what, what I, my wife and I did, we're looking for, for something, you know, where we're going to retire, and that's definitely Biloxi. We love it here. Again, looking, looking at, at the zoning, was assured that that was, was proper and looking there. As for the objections that are, that are brought up about the traffic control, I actually, after the last meeting, I went out and bought, purchased signs about no parking, tollway zone for, for that area. So it particularly would be, there wouldn't be a problem for the garbage trucks for that type of thing. I have surveillance cameras. James Foster will be running my short-term rental for me if, if it's, if it's approved. I've talked to him, he would be, he would, he's run these other ones in the area, and he would, he would be running that. So again, a lot of these concerns were addressed in, in the last meeting, and I think that we would take great due diligence in making sure that we have older folks, 25 and over.
Mr. McDonald, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Anybody else on my right, your left? Anybody on this side of the room? Last chance. Anybody on my left, your right? Mr. Higgins?
You just put it on the record and give all of your company. Nice job, chief. All right, I want to apologize, the last time I was mad, but, you know, I'm in here talking about the homeless, the, the lady down the street from me, it's a 70-year-old little girl. She goes to Nativity. She was going to that park and meeting two or three other ladies that was picking up their kids from Nativity. They, she couldn't, they couldn't make it halfway around the park without having someone trying to panhandle them or come on to them. And then they had, they had three or four kids there playing with three or four of them homeless people messing with them. So that ruined all of that, that park for them. And that's why I'm dealing, that's why I'm getting in the middle of all this. I just want you to know something. I was down there the day they lit the Christmas tree, the lighthouse lights. Well, they moved that blue snowball stand, it had Texas tags on it. I mean, every, every boat trail or utility trail I've owned, I had to buy Harrison County tag, but y'all gonna let them do business down there? So y'all ran off all the homeless and cleaned it up for the big lighthouse lighting, that looked good, except for all the junk stuck in the trees and all the junk stuck everywhere down there. Then a week or two later, Wendy Swettman had his bell ringing thing down there. Well, they cleaned it up again, and they ran off all the homeless. So that's two times they had it cleaned, and they had the cameras, WOLX and all that. It looked real good. So two times they've cleaned that park up, it's a big farce. You don't take, I mean, you don't put lipstick on a pig. You know, it's to the point now, that a friend of mine, for 15 years, she ran the homeless thing from where Biden, I mean, Trump lives down in Florida, she knows the ins and outs completely of what to do with all this, what you can and can't do. But doing nothing ain't going to get it. The city manager told me, well, they can't arrest nobody because they can't pay their fines. Well, what about all your work release programs, all your, all your community service and all? You know, I sent a bum down there that's a homeless guy that does my yard and all. He told me there's two or three child molesters hanging out at the park around them kids. And, and then he tell me, it's a big joke in the city of Biloxi, they won't arrest nobody. They can drink, drink beer everywhere, they do whatever they want to do because y'all ain't going to do them anything. Y'all need to start arresting these people, giving them community service, and if they don't show up, or when you arrest them again, lock them up for a while. Because if you don't try to stop somebody from doing bad things, what are they going to continue to do? They're going to drink beer everywhere, go to the bathroom everywhere? I mean, you go right across the street over here where the front of this place is. They defecate right there behind the oyster house.
Mr. Higgins, your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Anybody else on my left, your right?
Thank you.
Wish to speak? Sure, come on in.
Thank you to the mayor and honored gentlemen. My name is Sarah Lou.
On the handouts, I have, you know, the, maybe there's a copy for you, please. Thank you. On the handouts, I have, you know, the house done and got the certification completion by Jerry Creo, the first time during Covid in March 2020, as during a tough time. I spent over $40,000, you know, to work on the house, and I got the tenants there, also the contractor, work on the house. I gave them the entire year for free. And after that, you know, during the Covid, you know, and they move out. And also the completion of the work in 2018, I signed off, you know, on April 28. And I spent another $30,000, and we bought the house back in 2015, and total, you know, the house cost and the repairs cost us over $200,000. And our effort, you know, want to save the house and make the house livable, unfortunately during this year, I got Covid and back home, you know, in California, and care for my 90-years-old parents. And when I came back, you know, and I learned the house demolition, it's really heartbroken. And I did have, you know, the agent from the exit route, Justin and Mike Maiden, I think, you know, he talked to Jerry Creo, and we tried to get, you know, the new investor and the contractor to take over, you know, the properties and can restore, you know. This is a historical landmark home, and we tried to restore it. And unfortunately, due to my health and my financial crisis, you know, due to Covid, and I couldn't be able to do that, and I have, you know, the route helping me. And they asking, you know, if you can hold on to the demolition until, you know, we get transfer. And if in case they couldn't do it, and I'd rather have, you know, my own contractor do the demolition. Let me explain you why. Because the city tries, they send the contractor to my house, they damaged my house both times. The first time, you know, they filled up the pool, and then, you know, they... that, you know, during the COVID, you know, and they move out. And also, the completion of the work in 2018, I sign off, you know, on April 28. And I spent another $30,000. And we bought the house back in 2015. And total, you know, the house cost and the repairs cost us over 200,000. And our effort, you know, want to save the house and make the house livable. Unfortunately, during this year, I got COVID and back home, you know, in California and care for my 90 years old parents. And when I came back, you know, and I learned the house demolition, it's really heartbroken. And I did have, you know, the agent from the exes, Rudy, Justin and Mike Maiden, I think, you know, he talked to Jerry Creel. And we tried to get, you know, the new investor and the contractor to take over, you know, the properties and can restore, you know, this is the historical landmark home, and we tried to restore it. And unfortunately, due to my health and my financial crisis, you know, due to COVID, and I couldn't be able to do that. And I have, you know, the brutal helping me. And they asking, you know, if you can hold on to the demolition until, you know, we get transfer. And if in case they couldn't do it, and I rather have, you know, my own contractor do the demolition. Let me explain you why. Because the city tries, they send the contractor to my house. They damaged my house both time. The first time, you know, they fill up the pool. And then, you know, they destroy, you know, the wall, the beautiful brick gate and wall. I did brought that attention to the city. And the second time, they demolished, you know, back in June, this 2021, they demolished the back building, beautiful two story. And they demolished the back building, and they destroy, you know, the second flooring for the main house. And I did brought that attention to the city, too. And, you know, they charged me, you know, three times more than the regular price, and they damaged my house, too.
Ms. Lou, your time is up.
And I like to ask for
Thank you, Ms. Lou. Thank you, Ms. Lou. Your time is up. Is anybody else on my left, your right? Ms. Wyman?
Hello, everyone. I'm Tracy Wyman. I will sign in. I'm here to talk about the second item on the agenda, which has to do with the changes to the LDO as related to the Tree Committee, or excuse me, as related to tree protection. Basically, I'm speaking on behalf of the City of Biloxi Tree Committee. So can everyone hear me okay?
Sure. Might want to pull it a bit closer.
How's that?
Sound like a Walmart, sound like a Walmart manager telling, talking to Walmart shoppers.
Sounds like everybody has a lot of really important issues that are on their mind. And I'm really appreciative of the the opportunity that you listen to these community voices. I am a volunteer on the Tree Committee, and I have been on vacation, like most of you. And I do not have a copy of what I sent to you all last month, which was the city of which the Tree Committee's response to the the suggestions for the LDO changes. So I'm trusting and hoping that you all read those when they came last month. The issue was tabled on December 7 for this meeting because I could not be in town. Do you all have any idea what I'm talking about?
I do. And and I'm thinking when we when we get to this item, there may some be some discussion on that. And so I'm hoping you're still here because I know you're active in this, and you might be able to answer some of these questions that might come up. So
I'll I'll stick around. So basically, the Tree Committee has worked with the department or with the Director of Community Development, Mr. Creel, and the City Arbors, Mr. Nolan, since, good grief, 2017, to initiate some changes to the LDO as it relates to tree protection that would make the document simpler for everyone to understand, namely us, because we had to read it so many times before we could even understand it. But not only that. And so and so in that process, we read it, we read it over and over again. And we established for ourselves, as we would go through this process, a few guidelines that we would run, kind of filter all of our proposed revisions through. And these guidelines are on this sheet that I forwarded to you all last month. And clearly, and with certain understanding, you've forgotten about those. But that's okay. So the the guidelines that we looked at, we wanted to make sure we're preserving trees and reestablishing the canopy when trees are taken down. We're ensuring the preservation and the reestablishment of the native stock of trees for the City of Biloxi. That's in the LDO already. Feasibility, we wanted to help create and maintain a feasible process for the city with clear communication for the committee without lengthy approval processes for developers. Number three
Wyman, your time is up.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wyman.
I have a shot at it.
But stick around when we get to this item.
Got another shot coming up.
We may, we may have some questions.
Thank you.
So I know that your knowledge belongs.
And that's unlimited.
All right. Any other folks? Mr. Miller?
Stick with us.
Hi, good evening. I didn't really plan to come on here and talk. But, you know, sometimes I get inspired and think about things. And I'm lucky I have a council person here that I get to talk to often and kind of helps keep me balanced. And, you know, Biloxi has some good things going on. And I think y'all are working really hard. But about four years plus ago, a individual, Mr. Fofo, brought us I am Biloxi. I am Biloxi. These are the people that are working hard every day to be good neighbors, good stewards of their city, to try to make a difference. And on top of that, the thing that's unique about the coast is we're constantly fighting a battle. Hurricanes, economy, BP. It's exhausting. But let me tell you, when you do live in the neighborhood and you're working hard, I have three homes on Forest Avenue that I'm working to recreate a historic look. They're not going to be rented. And they'll be turned over to families that I hope that will respect them and respect the city. But, you know, when you're living in a community such as a lot of these people, it almost feels like you're constantly waiting on the hurricane to hit. Prepare, prepare, prepare. And I'm asking this administration to maybe consider, going forward, that we look at maybe allowing the active members in each community to be involved in decisions that affect their community. Short term rental is a good thing. Business is a good thing. We need to be more focused on business for Biloxi, not taking out good neighborhoods, not making life miserable for, and I know you're not doing that on purpose, but it feels that way. I would love to turn some of my property in short term rental. But I respect my neighbors. I respect the quietness that they deserve. And I just think we need to make some simple changes to move forward to allow this to work in a proper way. And please remember, we are Biloxi. We are working hard. And we respect your input and your help. And please take this in consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anybody else in the back? Yes, sir, the gentleman in the middle. Thank you.
My name is George Williams. I live at 150 St. George Avenue. And I've been there since 1994. And there was a speaker earlier that mentioned that he is either a developer or an investor that sent a petition, censor, whatever, out to Edgewater Estates for their short term rentals. And I don't recall getting anything like that in my neighborhood. So how can he use that as any kind of, you know, excuse for what they're trying to do? I remember at the corner, I remember my neighborhood, at the corner of Wilkes and St. George, the the northwest side, there was an older couple. The old man would come in, and he would honk his horn. And his wife would go in and fix the coffee. And that's the neighborhood that I want. I don't want people coming in. There are people that are doing these short term rentals that are not Biloxi people. They're from Michigan. They're from Wisconsin. They're not Biloxi.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody else? I think, yes, sir, in the back?
Council members, Mr. Mayor, I'm here on behalf of Mrs. Lou, who spoke to you earlier about her property on on Forest Street. I know the property is scheduled for demolition. You're going to discuss it later tonight about picking the contract or approving the contractor. However, here, I'm a I'm a witness character, basically, for her. I know there's been adversary relationship between the the city and Ms. Lou.
Be down here.
And certainly, she could do better with management of her property. However, I would like to point out that if the property is them is demolished, she will be left with the city lot. That will certainly decrease the the property taxes on it. I can tell you that she's not in a position, financial position, and health health wise, to herself rehab the place. However, she's actively looking for for an investor to buy it. And obviously, if if the council just allow a little bit more time, reasonable time, that she could sell property, obviously, with the demolition hanging over the property, you know, any any investor right now would pray won't touch it even. But if she was given some reasonable time to sell it, and somebody will rehab it, would obviously bring up more income to the city tax roll and enhance the beauty of the city. So thank you again. If you could reconsider that, at least give it some some extra time. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Could you tell us your name, please?
Jack Mazur. I'm a resident of Ocean Springs. I don't live in Biloxi or even in this county, but I'm just here like as a character.
And do you spell your last name?
M A C U R.
Thank you, Mr. Mazur.
Thank you.
Anybody else on my left, your right wish to address the council? Anybody in the back? Last call. Anybody? Thank you. That concludes the citizens' comments portion of this agenda. At this time, we have item A. If the clerk would read that item, it's a first reading.
Orders to approve a zoning map MM for a change in zoning for 153 and 161 Pine Grove Avenue and 2465 Deming Place from RS 10 low density, single family residential to RM 20 medium density, multifamily residential.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Lawrence. Since it's a first reading, that's all the action that's required. That brings us to the next item. If the clerk would read that item, it's the second reading.
Orders to amend selected sections of the land development ordinance pertaining to Tree Committee, tree permit, and tree protection.
I made the motion. The second was by Mr. Guines. And I just want to cover some things, Ms. Wyman, to be sure that I understood. So just bear with me. Tree permit is required for the removal, relocation, or alteration within any zoning district and on any size lot. Number one, any tree of protected species, live oak, bald cypress, southern magnolia, that are at least eight inches in diameter at diameter breast height, 54 inches or so above the ground, or any non protected species with a diameter at breast height of 16 or more inches, or exempt from the permitting process, any pecan, popcorn, water oak, or pine trees, any protected species, live oak, bald cypress, southern magnolia, less than eight inches diameter at direct breast height, and any non protected species with a direct breast height of less than 16 inches. The tree permits involving removal of one to four protected trees, approval authority rests with the Director of Community Development of the Arbors. Removal of five or more protected trees, residential subdivision, multifamily or commercial project requires planning commission approval and includes a public hearing. If there's a conflict between the recommendations of the Tree Committee, Director of Community Development, and/or the Planning Commission, the Director of Community Development will report the conflict to the mayor within two days. The mayor then decides which recommendation to accept. Newly proposed residential subdivisions will be required to mitigate to on a one to one basis for all protective tree protected trees removed. Mitigation tree, at least two to three inch caliper trees with a minimum height of six feet tall at planting. Mitigation trust is established to receive funds, funds from the developer in lieu of off site mitigation. The Planning Commission approved this on a 10 to one vote. That was a quick summary. Mr. Creel, you might want to point out the changes. But this is kind of the subject that we're dealing with. And I'll allow Ms. Wyman a few minutes if she has an additional comment.
You covered most of it. What we've what we've tried to do is to work with the Tree Committee to come up with an ordinance that that did a couple of things. Number one, finds that balance that we've talked about, you know, so that it's not all one way or all the other way, you know, so that it would not discourage in development, but it would also be set up to make sure that we protected as many trees on the property as possible. But the four biggest changes in here have to do, number one, with the establishment of the tree mitigation trust, which we've talked about many times. If a developer comes in and is wanting to develop a piece of property, and it's not possible for him to put the three to one mitigation trees on that same piece of property, he can pay the amount necessary for those trees into the mitigation trust. And then the city working with the Tree Committee can determine where on city property around the city that those trees can go. And I believe there'd be a lot of developers that would much rather do that than to have to worry about how to figure out if they removed 100 trees, how to figure out how to plant 300 trees on that same piece of property along with their development. So that that makes sense. The second revision has to do with the process for establishing the process for determining a majestic tree. There'll be some applications that'll come forward where there are trees that certain trees that need to be protected and need to have that title of being a majestic tree so that it'll have the the extended protection that it needs. That process is included here. Also, we removed some of the species of trees from the protected tree list. We've we've mentioned that there are three or four kinds that, you know, pine trees and popcorn trees and those kinds that are not protected trees. But we also removed water oak as well, because water oaks are should not be a protected tree. Live oaks, bald cypress, and magnolia trees are the protected trees under this ordinance. And then we recommended the change to the Planning Commission about subdivisions. Whenever a developer comes in to put in a subdivision, there's a lot of changes in the grade that have to be made to the property in order to shape the drainage so that it flows the right way. They also have to put in underground utilities. They have to put in roads. And a lot of times, the the grade changes around those trees. So what we did, instead of making the subdivision developer comply with the three to one replacement ratio, we recommended that the Planning Commission change that to one to one in a subdivision situation. Now, a lot of these subdivision developers, if there are mature trees on the property that need to be protected, if there's any way possible, they will try to protect them because that just makes the subdivision look more established. But in some cases, it's just impossible to do that because of all the changes they have to make to the grade to put in those utilities. But that's the the four basic changes that we made. I think we've done a good job putting this together. I think that we've improved our relationship with the Tree Committee. We do meet, we do sit down, we do discuss it. We don't always agree. But I think we've come out with a document that we that is has been simplified as much as possible to a point where if a developer comes in, we can hand that document to the developer, and he can give it to his engineer so that they can incorporate those changes into the design.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. Ms. Wyman, I'll give you a few minutes. If there are any comments related to what Mr. Mr. Creel said, or things you want to point out in the in the changes here that we're considering.
Yes, thank you. The the main concerns we have are, I mean, we agree Um, the, the main concerns we have are, um, I mean, we agree, water oaks are off the table now. Water oaks are no longer protected. Um, that takes, um, water oaks do contribute to a lot of our canopy, though. Um, and so those are no longer gonna be mitigated for. Um, so, and I regret that I don't have a copy of this, but basically, our main disagreement, one of our main points that we wanted all these processes to run through is our fourth point was to support a practice of transparency and equality by requiring the same process for all. And we, we really take issue with the fact that subdivisions would only be able to require, would be, only be required to mitigate at a rate of one-to-one, while other development would be required to mitigate according to this, uh, gradated mitigation table that's been created. Um, and I ran some figures, and what that means is, for an example that we're reviewing right now, where thirteen protected species are being removed, or will likely be removed. Um, if we use the, um, mitigation trust, which we won't in this case, because it's not enacted yet, but if we were to use the mitigation trust at fifty dollars a tree, multiply that times two dollars per tree, thirteen trees comes to thirty-nine hundred dollars that a developer has to pay, and they would pay that to the city, and the city would take care of the planting and the maintenance and the warranty of that tree for three years, and track it, GPS, make sure that it's taken care of, replace it if it dies, all of that. Um, second scenario would be under the new tree mitigation gradation table. Um, and that just upset that thirteen trees, because it's determined by the size of the tree that goes down, that takes it from thirty-nine trees to forty-five trees. So instead of the developer paying thirty-nine hundred dollars, they pay forty-five hundred dollars. Developer, that's, that's not very much money. That's a fourteen hundred dollar difference, that's not very much, and I sure, I guess you probably all agree with me. And so the new language is suggesting that we go to that gradation table that would ask those developers to pay that forty-four, forty-five hundred dollars in this scenario. Unless you're developing a single-family residential subdivision, and then you only pay thirteen hundred dollars. And again, I'm just making the argument that, and the Tree Committee is making this argument, if you're developing a subdivision, I don't think that four thousand dollars in difference in the scheme of the whole multimillion dollar project is really gonna break your bank. And yet, and, and what, but, but clearly throughout every section of the land development ordinance as it relates to tree protection, we are talking about preserving and replenishing the tree canopy in the city. And we're not gonna do it if we don't ask single-family home developers to do it as well. So we, we take issue with that, and we take issue with new residential home sites not, uh, having to, you know, if, the rule is, if you have five or more trees, you're taken out, it goes to Planning Commission, unless you're doing new construction. And, and that doesn't, that just doesn't line up with a, you know, an equal process for everybody. Um, so those are the things we take issue with, and there's, there's more discussion to be had. And I think it's a discussion that could be weighed in by, um, a, a multidisciplinary team, and I'm wondering if there is a path for, to workshop this, or to, to take this to public hearing. I, I don't know what the next step is, but, but we, we do take issue with that, with those things, and we, um, feel like the city of Biloxi should know, the people should know, that that's the direction, um, that we're headed. If, you know, and if, if that's what the city wants, fine, but we just, we've studied this, and we've noticed these kinda conflicts, and we wanna bring it to your attention. And again, the whole point of everyone of us working together and doing this was to bring simplicity to this language, and now we've got this one table that applies to this, 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 and this person, but this other table or rule that applies to this, um, this developer. And so it's, it just doesn't, it seems like we're favoring these single-family residential developers, and there's really no justification for it. That's, so that's the Tree Committee's position.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wyman. Mr. Creel, a party comment, if you have one?
When you're dealing with a subdivision development, many more trees typically come down, and I can tell you that with the number of trees that come down, if you've been out to, uh, where they're clearing for the preserve off of Shriners Boulevard, I can tell you that if those kind, if those developers would've had to replace trees at three-to-one, it would've, it would've killed that subdivision. They went in, they had to go in and clear it out, and now they're getting ready to shape it to put the, the infrastructure in. If you've got an individual site, let's say like we did with the, uh, Hyatt Place Hotel that went in, and that's a specific site, it had limited area on it, and the process actually worked the right way. I don't remember how many acres was in there, it wasn't that many. But as it went through DRC and it went through the Planning Commission, originally, they had the hotel located on the west side of the property, but as it went through the process, they agreed to move the hotel over to the east side of the property in order to save more trees on the west side, and it, it worked out just the way that it's supposed to. But when you talk about a hundred acre site and going in and clearing it out, we just think that three-to-one on that site is excessive. And, uh, and, and you know, the, now, the, the fee is still going to be the same, you know, if they, if they remove a hundred trees, they're gonna have to turn around and pay uh, two dollars for every one, you know, that, that's there in order to cover the cost of sprinkler systems and all of those kinda things. But they're also gonna have to, you know, to, uh, pay into the trust for the number of mitigation trees that are gonna be required. So, uh, I believe, I believe it's fair, I, I believe there's a distinct difference between a limited site development and a very large subdivision development, and that the requirement for replacing the trees needs to be in scale with each size. And, um, the, the issue with the water oaks being removed, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a tree expert, I've got Eric Nolan in the back of the room, if you'd like for him to step up here and speak to, you know, why the water oaks, you know, should've been removed, uh, he'll certainly come and do that, but I just think the one-to-one ratio on a new subdivision coming in is the right way to go.
All right, I'll open it up to questions, if some of the council members have questions of Mr. Creel, I know I do, Mr. Barrett.
Yeah, um, just one quick question. Can you explain to me again what, uh, she was speaking about as far as the, um, the trust and the payment per protected tree, and what, like, myself would pay for, you know, if I'm building or whatever and take trees down versus what, what they're paying?
Mm-hmm.
And a maximum or whatever.
Okay. All right. When a developer comes in, let's say for a subdivision, for example, uh, we, the way the ordinance is written now is that the trees, there's a, a grace period after the project is completed in order to get the trees put in. And that grace period is not working very well, because once you allow that business to open, then the sense of urgency goes away. So what this trust would do is allow those people to write a check right up front, and it would go, we've already got an, an account line item set up in accounting for that money to go into there, and we were, we're setting it up so that that money could not be released. We'd bring it before the council, you know, to show that we've made a determination about where the, uh, the replacement trees need to go, whether it's down city streets, or whether it's in Hiller Park, or whether it's in the cemeteries, or, or whatever. Uh, most developers, I think, would, would love to have this inherent.
But monetarily, an individual or an individual business, what do they pay versus a developer of a subdivision?
Well, they would all pay the same per tree, per tree that was replaced. Let me get to that section. There's a, a formula that we actually put in the ordinance to show what the replacement would be. Okay. The mitigation trust bank, if, if the developer does not have the space to plant the mitigation trees on site, they may elect to donate the mitigation trust, uh, to the mitigation trust in lieu of planting mitigation trees. The donation amount will be based on the number of mitigation trees required by the cost of the purchase, planning, and maintenance. It would be the formula. The purchase price times two equals the cost of mitigation purchase, and this is to cover the planting, the irrigation, and the maintenance. That's why we're charging them, um, more in order to, uh, cover those additional costs that would come in with it, so that we're not losing money, you know, in.
So is there a cap on the amount that we would charge a developer?
Well, that would, that would be the amount there. I mean, it's really gonna depend on how many trees that they remove, that's gonna determine what it is, but there is no cap, no.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Glavin?
Uh, I, I just wanna, I just wanna make some comments. First of all, I appreciate all the hard work of the Tree Committee. I think it's essential. I think there's personalities sometimes that, that we've worked over the years to try to kinda blend in with what we all want, and that's the success of our city, and to maintain being a tree city. Uh, that being said, um, one-to-one ratio, I don't know, versus three-to-one ratio, you know, I don't know, I, I don't know if that's the right ratio. I know y'all have given it some thought, perhaps a two-to-one ratio is more fair, um, or it's more equitable for the long-term success of the tree city, which is Biloxi. And does it kill a development? Man, that's a fine line, and, and, you know, I commend the Hyatt Place, as you mentioned, to move, uh, their, their project around to accommodate those trees. If you, if anyone has, uh, driven the parking lot of the Hyatt Place, you have a canopy of large oak trees that really make it very, very appealing, very appealing. And just envision if those were removed, it would have that sterile kind of, uh, you know, cold feeling that you, when you drive into a box, uh, building, it, it certainly doesn't have that. Um, so, uh, man, we're, we're charged with, you know, approving this ordinance today and, uh, going forward, supporting our Tree Committee, supporting our Director and Community Development, uh, to make sure that, uh, we are attracting developers and we're not hindering them, but I, listen, I, I think we, if it's a two-to-one ratio, I think as a developer, I'm gonna think twice on, well, where can I put my house or my structure versus just mowing all the trees down and, and doing a one-to-one in a tree bank? And, um, so that's my two cents. I, I, I sit here today, and I, I want to be pro-business and proactive with that, but there's a dance with being pro-business, and there's a dance with being pro aesthetics and, and a beautiful tree city with our oak trees. We've already removed, according to the ordinance, a lot of different trees that in, in the, that would've been protected trees, we removed a lot of those. So we've taken a little bit of the burden and sting, uh, out of a developer that otherwise would be in there. So I just wanted to make those comments as we move to a final decision on if we're gonna pass this as it sits, or if we're gonna make any amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Uh, Mr. Guines, excuse me, Ms. Newman, had a question?
Why can't we just put in the ordinance that we highly suggest a developer do two-to-one, but absolute must one-to-one? But, you know, just, 'cause every situation is different, so if it's, if they're able to do two-to-one, then we push for that, but, you know?
If, if it's not rigid language, then a developer's not gonna adhere to it. I mean, it, it, it has to be, it, it has to be a specific number so that it's consistent across the board. Most.
But, but every project's different.
That's right, and every developer's gonna look for every way they can to cut cost on their project, and if you, if you give them some flexibility, then they're gonna come in with all these reasons why they can't make the two-to-one ratio and, uh, and need to stick with the one-to-one. So, you know, whether it's three-to-one or whether it's one-to-one, I believe the language needs to be very specific about what the replacement is going to be.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Guines?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, the criteria for coming up with this, how did we come up with this, um, language? And then the other, uh, question I have is, in comparison to the other cities, our neighboring cities, uh, how is the language as far as theirs compared to ours?
Um, I would ask Eric, you know, about comparing it to other cities, I don't know. I do know that the language we had here, uh, came up through our meetings with the committee. And I can tell you that when we got started, we were at polar opposites, because the position of the Tree Committee was that no tree should come down, period. And our position was, and, and, and you know, the, the language that was being circulated is that we were allowing contractors to go out and just clear-cut properties, which was not true. And so what we tried to do, and, and, and believe me, it was not, uh, it was not always peaceful in the, in the meetings, but I think we finally got to a point to where we were able to come to common ground on a lot of these different things. And, and the fact that, you know, right now, there only seems to be one point that we're not in agreement on, I think that shows that we've got a lot of unity, uh, with the committee and, and with, and we're gonna continue to talk. We're, we're gonna continue to have these meetings and discuss it. We've, uh, we've put a lot of things into, into place right now, where the Tree Committee has advised of all the trees that come down. Anytime Eric issues a permit for a tree to be removed, he sends that information to the committee so that they're aware of it, they have a chance to go out and look at it. So we've, we've come a long way, and I, I think we've made a lot of improvements.
Mr. Lawrence, anything?
Question on the, the water oaks, y'all removed it. How many water oaks are there compared to Majesticos in that city? Do you have any idea if they're one-to-one, two-to-one? Was, was there a reason to remove the water oaks?
Well, my understanding is, is that water oaks are not necessarily a protected species, but they have a tendency to rot out very quickly in, inside, and, uh, I'm not, again, I'm not the expert on that. Uh, I asked Eric to come up and answer that question, you know, because he knows a lot more about it than I do.
Bring him up to have a.
Would you like for him to come?
They don't rot out that quick. You're talking about a hundred years. They say they don't rot any quicker than anything else. You're talking about rotten. Give us a scoop here, Eric. How many water oaks we have in the city of Biloxi?
Twenty-three. I haven't done a hard count, but I will tell you that, um, over the last five years, eighty percent of the, the tree permits that I issue are because of hazard water oaks. Typically, what's hap, what happens with water oaks is once they get up above fourteen to sixteen inches, uh, and up to about twenty-four to twenty-six inches in diameter, you start seeing some, some, um, some heart rot, and you get some sarcotic, uh, root rot coming in. If there's any kinda compaction in the soil, the root rot will be more pronounced, but almost exclusively, the heart rot comes in and causes problems. And the way the coast is right now, you get a cavity that has water in it, you're gonna end up with formosin termites in it, which is what is, what is happening to a bunch of them. They use the tree basically as a host. Uh, they, they really don't eat the live wood, they eat, they eat the dead wood in the tree and use it to, to branch out to other places. So, uh, seeing that repeatedly over and over and over again, uh, I just thought it was the best, the best, uh, plan of attack was to remove them from the protection list so that, uh, homeowners and developers could, uh, could get that problem out of the way while they're developing their property.
Eric, what was your experience with Zaida? And I think we spent about five million hours cleaning up the debris. How much do you estimate, uh, what was the majority of the trees that got knocked down in that Zaida situation?
I would say the majority of the trees that came down were water oaks and pecans.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, cup, thank you, Eric, I appreciate it. Uh, Jared, just a couple of questions. And the, the Tree Committee, I mean, all their recommendations are just that to the Planning Commission, and I appreciate the hard work that they do. I mean, they're trying to maintain the tree canopy and, and increase it. I mean, they're trying to maintain the tree canopy and, and increase it, because we've lost so much of the canopy due to storms. The mitigation bank, how was the cost on my property? I knocked down an oak tree this big and a magnolia this big. So I'm going to be dinged for two trees, correct?
Yes, sir.
No?
Yeah, yes.
I'm getting one answer from you and one answer from Eric, different answer from Eric.
How'd you do with the diameter of the tree?
Mitigation is only going to be required for commercial and, commercial projects and residential projects. Single-family, single-family homeowners, when they have to remove trees off, off of their property, they're not required to mitigate.
Okay, so let me rephrase that. So I'm building a house on a lot, or I'm developing three lots, and I have six, six protected trees. So I'm going to write a check for those six protected trees currently.
Not if it's a single-family lot.
All right, all right, so go along with me here just for discussion purposes. All right, so give me, give me an example where I do know what I'm talking about.
Okay, you're, you're a developer that's going to do a subdivision. And Eric goes out and meets with the developer's land surveyor who puts together the inventory of the number of trees on there that are going to be removed.
Okay, here, here I got a question. All right, so, and, and that's what, I've seen that before. So it's a breakdown of what trees are there. So how's it determined which trees are counted? It's not every single little bitty tree. How's it determined? It's got to be a certain size, I would assume, to be counted, correct?
Yeah, you read it, you read it at the beginning of the, the meeting, the sizes that would be considered, yes, sir.
Okay, so let's, let's say the current ratio is three-to-one. So let's say, as a developer, I've got 10 trees that I'm taking out, and I'm gonna, under the current ordinance, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pay for 30 trees, right? So how much is it per tree? And is that cost per tree consistent, or does it vary by size?
Eric would, Eric would get the prices for whatever, because, you know, the cost of trees changes just like anything else, yes.
Exactly, so my question is, should we go with the market rate of the tree and put that in, in there? Because that's going to vary from time to time, so maybe that's something we need to, to look at adding or revising at some point. That was my first question. The other, the other thing is, whatever that, the cost is per tree, then I heard you double that for the care and feeding of that tree and the planting of that tree. So who's actually going to go out and plant that? Mr. Glavine's a busy man. He's not going to plant it for the city. Who actually goes out to plant that tree and?
I'll go do it, I'll go do it.
And goes back, and goes back to, to check on that tree or water it or whatever? Would that be Public Works, or is that a contractor?
It could be a combination of both. You know, in an ideal scenario, you know, because it's going to be on city property, we would probably get, try to get Public Works to do it. But in the event that we can't get Public Works to do it, the cost that's being paid into here would also help pay for the planting as well.
Exactly.
We've got that covered.
Okay, the, the next thing is, let's say one of those trees is a nice live oak that's just got to go, where I want to put one of my houses, and that sucker is whatever that is, Eric, how big that is. I'm going to be charged the going rate for an oak, the market rate replacement oak, for that live oak, not for a tree this big. And I know the bigger they get, the higher the mortality rate when you plant them, but we're probably talking about a two-inch, three-inch. You see what I'm getting at? So I take out a beautiful oak tree. It's not a majestic oak, it's not, it's protected, so I've got to mitigate, and I'm going to replace it with, I don't know, something six feet high and what, a two or three caliper?
Give me a minute.
Okay. I know this is not the most exciting topic for everybody out there. I apologize for that, but. Oh, boy.
Okay, a 16-inch tree.
So if you remove a tree, 16 inches of diameter, you would be required, if you look table, three, you would be required three mitigation trees. So it would be the market rate of the tree times two times the mitigation tree. In order to take out a 16-inch tree, you have to plant it. Or pay three, two to three caliber groups, that means six to four, times two times the number of the.
You'd know better than anybody else. Do you have a number for a tree? What did we cost? I'm just curious. Is it a live oak, a hundred bucks?
I'm going to call it 120, 120.
Yeah.
I'll see if we'll mark it, probably there'll be one that you use, because they're, they're the closest nursery, get their price, multiply times two, that would be the cost per mitigation.
And the chart is in the proposed ordinance to show.
Okay, and, and, right, that's for a developer, and, and.
If you take down a tree that's above 28 inches of diameter.
Thirty-six inch, good one.
You would have to do six mitigation.
Okay.
So it would be six mitigation trees times two for every mark.
Okay, so if I'm a developer and I have several lots and I take out a few of those trees, under what's proposed that we're looking at here, and the replacement would be one-to-one, not three-to-one?
The sub, there's a specific section in here that exempts the subdivision or limits it to one, one-to-one.
Right, and, and just in my mind, so if I'm a developer and I've got a piece of property and I want to put 80 houses there, I'm going to mitigate those trees, whatever it costs per oak tree, or whatever, whatever that cost is, I'm going to double it on a one-to-one basis. And I'm, and I'm thinking, well, I'm listening to the comments and everything, and the whole point of this is, we're losing canopy. We continue to lose canopy. And when we have developers come in and knock down all of these trees, we're losing more canopy. So somebody, if we're gonna, going to increase or at least maintain the size of our canopy, somebody's got to pay for this. I mean, that, that's it. I'm not knocking it. I, I don't, one-to-one bothers me. I'm thinking a developer comes in, no developer wants to spend any more money than they have to. And I'm thinking on a one-to-one basis, the people who lose in this, is everybody in the room, because you have less canopy? There's a cost attached to all of this. The question is, who's going to bear the cost? If it's not the, if it's not the developer, who's left? That, that's the point I'm trying to make here, and I think I've made it.
Councilman, there was one thing that we talked about earlier that you hadn't brought up. You've all been talking in the future tense. So when does this kick in? If I'm a developer that had my plat approved in 2001, and I had to mitigate 100 trees, am I free, free to go now, or are you going to go back and collect from me?
I'd raise that, I don't know, that question, a number.
If this ordinance is adopted, if this ordinance is adopted in 30 days, it would go into effect, and from that point forward, they would comply with what's here. But any previous developer only has to comply with what was in place at the time. That's the way all ordinances work.
Which was, what was in place at the time? Three-to-one?
Yes, any previous, any previous development.
Three-to-one, but there was no mitigation bank. Would they have to contribute?
They could. They could actually, they could actually use that option if they wanted to.
Right, and what leverage do we have if, I mean, they've already developed the subdivision, maybe it opened a year ago, and we're trying to get maybe, whatever the cost is, $12,000, we'll say, pick a number. And they say, oh, okay, thanks, we'll make a note of that. What happens to them if, what consequences there if they decide, I'm not going to pay it?
Well, then their project can't move forward.
But what, what if it's a project that was completed a year ago? We've got homeowners in that subdivision.
I'll, I'll give you the example. What we're doing right now at Nature's Trail is we do not give them a CO for the house that's built until the, the, the agreement that was made, the approval that was given on Nature's Trail subdivision, is that they would put one tree on each lot that they created out there. And if they're on a corner lot, they would put two trees there, one on the front and one on the side. And if they do not plant those trees, then when we go out to do our building final, that building final does not pass, meaning they do not get a certificate of occupancy until the trees are planted on the property.
Okay.
Any questions, comments?
I'm just thinking that this is going to require maybe a public hearing or some other to, to make sure we get this right, we're representing who we're representing, you know, so.
Is that the form of a motion? Go ahead.
So, so every subdivision that is being built or has been built, since the Tree Committee has been in place, has been a three-to-one ratio, correct?
That, that's what was in place, yeah.
How many subdivisions have not, how many developers haven't built their subdivision because of that three-to-one ratio?
I don't know that anybody has said that they're not going to do it. I mean, most of them, if they, if they come in and they realize that they have the option of waiting till later in the project to do it, I mean, up to now, because we had no mitigation bank, then, okay, at the end of the project, we'll come in and, and put the trees in. Now, the problem with that is that when a, when a subdivision plat comes in, the way that the industry works now is that you've got developers that go out and develop the lots on a subdivision, they file the plat, they put in the infrastructure, and then they sell those lots to the builders. The builders now, they do not want to get involved in the zoning aspect or the infrastruc- all they want to do is buy lots and build houses. So then we're caught at the end with a situation where a builder might say, well, you know, wait a minute, I, I didn't agree to that, you know? So what we're having to do is to put that language on the plats now, to make sure that it carries with the subdivision from that point forward. I think this mitigation bank is the best thing that we can do.
Okay, so to circumvent that, could we not make them pay upfront? And then if they, and then if they do, if they don't plant the trees, it's our money.
That's right.
But if they do plant them, here's your money back, basically like, yeah.
What the mitigation trust does, it, it, they pay upfront, they pay before anything moves forward. You know, once we determine how many trees are going to have to be removed, then they write us a check and we put it into that account. Now, if later on, if they decide that, well, we've decided we're going to go back in and plant the trees, okay, fine, go plant the trees, and once we've determined that all the trees are in place, we'll go back to the city council and ask them to reimburse you for whatever.
Hey, folks. Mr. Lawrence, and then I'll get to you.
I think we just need to call a public workshop for this. We're not going anywhere. We're asking the same old question, we've done this before. It needs to be broken down and explained to everybody exactly what you're voting on and what you're passing. So I think we need to table this and just call for a public workshop.
I'll second it.
All right, so there's a motion to table.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it the one-to-one ratio? Is that what's holding this up? Because everything else.
There's way more questions than that.
Agreement for.
More questions than that.
I think in the public interest, I, I think this council needs to call for a, a workshop so that they can see that we're covering all the bases. I know y'all have covered a lot of them, Director, but I think it's just, it's good for the public to see that we're doing our due diligence as well.
So do we want a workshop or a hearing? Is there technically, is there a difference, or?
Yes, there is, because we've got to advertise for the public hearing. So is it a workshop? I think your motion was for a workshop or a public hearing, Mr. Lawrence?
Whatever we get the answers from. We need to have the answer. We don't need to have these meetings over and over again.
We'll do a workshop, okay? So we'll conduct a workshop. Our next meeting is on the 18th at 1:30. Do you want to have the workshop in the morning that day or following the meeting that day?
After the other meeting. After the other meeting, where are you?
After, okay, so we're going to schedule it immediately following the January 18th meeting at 1:30. Yes, we'll table it to January 18th. All right, there's a motion and a second. The motion is to table this and schedule a workshop following the January meeting of the council, January 18th meeting, okay? All in favor? Approved on a six-o vote, thank you. All right, if the clerk would read item C, please.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for short-term rental located at 1501 Avalon Street.
There's a motion to deny by Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second? I'll second it. A discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
I think the major problem here is it's 1501 Avalon, it is done, does not meet the requirement of the conditional use. It does sit inside of a residential area, which is rated 7.5. We've always stated up here at the council, we were never going to break up neighborhoods and do that. So this here has too many problems with the conditional use. They don't qualify for two or three of them. So I think it's just the best thing to do, to stop this from trying to happen in other places, put them on other streets, to deny this application for the conditional use at 1501 Avalon Court. So I need y'all's support to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. My, my comments are, I remember earlier with RM 20 and 30, my proposal was at the time, and it wasn't supported, which is fine, was that we not permit conditional uses in RM 20 and RM 30 zones, for a couple of reasons. Number one, you have a lot of these in the middle of neighborhoods, traditional neighborhoods throughout the city. And the second, second reason was, we saw a lot of people who were beginning to buy apartment complexes and flip some of those rooms. I mean, what we have today in terms of short-term rentals has evolved over the years, but I'm, I'm not in favor of a short-term rental in, in this location. There are a couple, there's another short-term rental coming up on this agenda that happens, that we'll, we'll look at a little later, but, but it is similar. My reasoning is this, the next one that comes up that we'll, we'll cover is on Pass Road, that's a commercial corridor, I don't have a problem with that. It's like Mr. Foster's beach rental there on Highway 90, I don't have a problem with that. But on the, on the back part of those lots, that front Avalon Street, and I went and looked at it, and I think there are three or four other parcels to the west that are zoned RM 30, I believe. I, I, I just have concerns about that. It's one thing if you're facing 90, it's, it's another thing, in my opinion, if you're facing inward, you're part of that neighborhood, and I don't think anybody signs up or builds a house or lives in a house for 30 years to have a commercial enterprise next door. That's just my personal feeling. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Glavine?
So, you know, this is conditional use, it's not used by right. And certainly the council, councilman that's representing this area, that should hold some weight. He's representing the people here, so Mr. Lawrence has spoken. But the other thing is, the, the people that have come out today to make their voice heard and to come before this council and take the time and talk about their, their home where, where they reside and the quiet enjoyment that they want to continue. And so as we look at the conditional use, sometimes the neighborhood, it isn't an issue. There may be only one voice out of many that are in there. There's a preponderance of the residents that are here today saying that they don't want this, and they're asking us, you know, to support them, and I, I think that's what we've been elected to do and, and take a look at. This is, again, conditional use, it's not used by right.
Any other comments, Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, briefly. I'm very pro-business. I'm, just anyone who, who has been involved in the short-term rental discussions knows that I'm very pro-short-term rental. We voted on a lot of these, and there's only been a couple that I voted no against that didn't make sense. If I lived in this subdivision, I wouldn't be opposed to it. However, I was also elected by the people to represent their will, not what I think, and the people have spoke very loud. It's not just like Mr. Glavine said, one or two, it's pretty much everyone who lives in that area. So for that reason, I'm going to oppose it.
Any other questions or comments? There being no more call for the question. All in favor of the denial? All opposed? Okay, so. All right, would you phrase, would you phrase the amendment for me? Take your. Okay, so, Mr. Lawrence, what, what we have to do, it's a resolution, we have to amend this resolution to deny it, and we need to have a reason for the denial, you say? Okay, is that accurate, Mr. Eibach? So your amendment would be to deny a short-term rental. So your amendment would be to deny a short-term rental for the, for the reason of, or for the following reasons?
I've stated them already, it does not meet the requirement of the conditional use that we just set the laws by.
Okay.
They failed too, I already said that.
Well, that's okay, well, I want to, I want to just repeat it for the clerk. So Kerry, you getting that? Did, did you get what you needed? Okay, so we're good. So first we vote on, first we vote on the amendment, correct? All in favor of the amendment is presented by Mr. Lawrence. All opposed? The amendment's approved on a five-one vote. Ms. Newman in opposition. Is there anything else that's required at this point? Okay, now we'll call for the vote on the amended resolution. All in favor? All opposed? Again, it's a five-one vote in favor, Ms. Newman opposing. That brings us to item D. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for a short-term rental located at twenty-five oh four Pass Road.
Okay, so this is for a conditional use for short-term rental at twenty-five oh four Pass Road. Uh, I'll make that motion that we approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
There's a second by Mr. Barrett. Any discussion? Uh, again, this is what I mentioned previously, it's on the corner of a commercial corridor. The only comment I've heard from anybody in the neighborhood with someone living next door, they said, not a problem, happy to have it here. I'm behind them, doesn't bother me and they're on Pass Road. Um, Mr. Barrett, any other comments? Any other comments? All in favor? It's approved on a six oh vote, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence. I'm sorry, Mr. Barrett beat you.
No, that's fine, you can give it to whoever.
All right. All right. Let's start, uh, Mr. Barrett, we'll start on your end.
No, no questions.
No.
I would just like to say that I appreciate what our clerks do and, um, I'm in support of C.
Okay, uh, Ms. Newman?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it wasn't C. It's, it's one of these, but, yes.
Okay, Ms. Newman, any, any comments, items? Mr. Guines, any? Mr. Lawrence, any?
There's, I've got one question on the C.
C is in Charlie.
Charlie, we're learning these things here, Mike. The insurance, what are you, what are you doing here?
We're, we're talking about Charlie, C, five Charlie? Okay, that's just, we're recognizing the, the funds that, for an insurance payment. It, it's not the last payment though, Peter's got more on it than I do.
How many more payments we have?
They, they still owe us, um, about a hundred and twenty thousand.
And that'd be it, that would be even.
Right, that'll make us even.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
That's it.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor of the consent agenda is presented.
Oh darn, I don't get to speak at part.
Approved on a six oh vote, any exceptions?
Five oh. Mr. Kenny's up.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, on a five oh vote, Mr. Glavin is absent. Okay, that brings us to the, uh, routine agenda since we have no code enforcement hearings. Motion on the routine agenda by Mr. Lawrence. Thank you, Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, Walt finally got off vacation. So now you got to speak up a little bit, Walt.
Well, I'd like to comment on the tree ordinance first. No, just kidding. Uh, well, I was out on vacation and then out a little bit sick over the holidays, uh, it's updating the administration. Of course, I told you, I believe, about the one point nine million we received, uh, prior to Christmas, as I promised, which is great. We have more than sixty days in advance funding for all of our infrastructure projects. Uh, no new money in the queue right yet, but we've got some invoices to pay and then there'll be more monies on the way, so we're well in advance of our sixty days.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
That's it.
Any items, uh, for discussion on the, on the routine agenda? There being none, call for the question, all in favor. It's approved on a four oh vote.